Is allowed to speak first and will be allowed 10 minutes to present their appeal. Anyone else present in support of the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. Anyone present in opposition to the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. The applicant then will be allowed three minutes for rebuttal or other closing comments. The meeting will then be closed to public comment and the board will make a decision. That decision and reason will be announced. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or a member of the board requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. The decisions of this board can only be appealed to the Polk County District Court. If you believe you have been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations. All material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation will become a permanent part of the record and will not be returned. If you have cell phones on, we ask that you turn them off or put them on silence. It's very disruptive, the process here. If we need to, we're going to take a short break around the 3:00 or 3:30 timeframe. As I mentioned, we've got five items on the consent agenda items. I'll read those off. Item two is an exception at 1021 26th Street. Item three is a special permit at 1301 Locust. Item four is an exception at 303 45th Street. Item five is an exception at 3318 Fifth Avenue. And item six is a conditional use permit at 201 Southeast 18th Street. These are the ones that we talked about. We're going to vote on them as one vote and we're going to vote in accordance with staff recommendations. So is there anybody here that's here to speak against items two through six on the consent agenda? Anybody on the board have any objections? I'll entertain a motion to accept consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve items two, three, four, five, and six, and the exceptions, special permits, and conditional use permits requested therein, subject to the staff recommendations presented.
You hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries five to nothing, so if you're here, you've been approved, head on over, get your permits, and get started. Or you can stay and watch your city at work. Item one is an affirmation of a vote we had last month at 4800 Southwest 9th. Everybody get a chance to look that over? Okay, I'll have a motion to accept.
I'll move item one.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries five to nothing, and I'll sign that when you need. Okay, we'll move to the public hearing agenda. First item is item seven. This is an item that was continued from the January 25th meeting. It's a special permit variance and exception at 2825 Summit Vista Drive.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Board, I'm going to pass around all the notifications. You're going to see highlighted in blue, there are dates on here. This item was continued from the December meeting to allow the consideration of special permit variances for home occupation. And then it was continued from the January 25th meeting to allow for the notification of 250 feet for the adjoining property owners. So in blue on these notification cards is the date of when they were received. Some of them are stapled together. And there is also a lettering here from the Southwestern Hills Neighborhood Association. Again, the appeals is for a special permit for home occupation. The variance to waive the restriction that home occupation shall have no outside operation or storage of display materials or products. The variance for the provision stating that a home occupation must be the use that is permitted in C2 general retail and highway-oriented commercial district without the approval of the board here. The exception of 304 square feet over the calculated maximum allowed, 720 square feet within the front yard of paving. And for the retention of a home-based business for lawn care service, the business includes vehicles and storage trailers parked outdoors on the premises. The property is located off of Summit Vista Drive, right here, to the east of Southwest 30th Street, located in the residential neighborhood known as the Mond Damon Presidential Neighborhood.
I'm sorry?
Oh, Southwestern Hills, I'm sorry. It does contain two-story, single-family dwelling with an attached garage. The site sketch here kind of just shows you what the first came in here on the first meeting in December. They had done an additional paving of 311 square feet. And that'd be in addition to the 700, and let me make sure, 13 square feet within the front yard area, comprising of 1,024 square feet. That does come out to be about 35.6% of the front yard area. The maximum allowed per zoning is 25%, which comes out to be 720. It does, they did pave that to allow access for an off-street parking area that's adjoining the existing attached garage there. So that's why they had come in for that relief. They had indicated, like I said before, that they do want to operate a lawn care business and store and park lawn care equipment and trailers out there within the driveway and then within that side yard parking area. The site sketch here kind of, or I'm sorry, the site photo shows that they didn't finish the actual drive approach, but they did have that drive or off-street parking area where they're currently showing storing the lawn care business trailer with the equipment on it. Closer picture. Staff isn't really concerned with the home occupation. Portion of it being conducted on the premises, as long as it's conducted entirely within the building. However, the use of the residential driveways for the storage of the lawn care equipment is pretty, can be detrimental to the residential neighborhood and the character. And staff believes it doesn't meet the criteria to grant or for the unnecessary hardship to grant that relief. Staff believes the equipment can reasonably be stored, reasonably stored in a building off-site or possibly in the garage. Staff does believe that the appellant does have practical difficulty for the exception of 304 square feet over the maximum allowed 320 for that front yard paving area to access that off-street parking area that's off to the adjoining side of the attached garage. So in that hindsight, staff recommends to now the requested variances of the provisions that prohibit outdoor storage and home occupation involving the uses that would not be permitted in a C2 district. Staff recommends approval of the requested special permit for the home occupation and exception of 304 square feet over the calculated maximum allowed, 720 square feet of the paving within the required front yard, subject to the following conditions. No outdoor storage of lawn care equipment related to lawn care business may occur on the premises. Any equipment related to the business to be kept on premises set for a pickup or trucks or vans used alternatively for personal use must be stored inside a building and is limited to the use, no more than 50% of the area of the accessory structure. Any paved area not extended to driveway should be tapered to 45-degree angle. Any triangular area between the paving and the front property line shall be landscaped sod with sod and/or shrubs. Questions?
Out of curiosity, did they get a permit to put the pavement on?
Not that I know of.
Okay. And who actually lives in the house? I notice this is a trust.
From reading the letters, it sounds like the parents, the dad had passed away and the mom either willed over or, what's the word I'm looking for?
Could you put that last picture up?
Yeah, this one?
Yeah, is that, are you asking for, maybe there can't be, a fence or anything along that side? Is that towards the neighbor's property?
Correct.
Okay. But it's not one of your recommendations? Would that be screened?
Well, our recommendation is that they not store any outdoor lawn care equipment, and that's what they're doing there because it doesn't meet the C2 standards.
But if they, could they park a vehicle there of their own?
Yes.
Okay. But if they did that, do you still not, I mean, there's no, nothing in the staff recommendations says put a fence up, is what I'm getting at?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Back to your question, Mr. Gray. The son, I think he's living, residing at the home right now, but I'm sure the appellant can speak with that.
And he's the one that's running the lawn care business?
Yes, correct.
All right. Mel.
Manny, just a clarification now. There's a request for a variance of the provision that requires the home occupation must be a use that would be permitted in the C2 general retail highway-oriented district. So does that mean that this use isn't even normally permitted in the general C2 commercial district then?
Variations of this use can be permitted. The actual storage of the equipment is an M1, is an M1 standard.
Okay. And the idea being, I'm assuming that with home occupations, we want to make them fairly innocuous, and this wouldn't even be allowed in a general commercial district then?
Correct.
Correct. This is the type of stuff you should see in a light industrial district?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And one more question, doesn't owner occupy, in order to have a home occupation, doesn't it have to be owner occupied?
I believe it is owner occupied.
For a home occupation, it just has to be operated by the occupant of the house.
Oh, so that's right.
So it doesn't necessarily have to be the title holder.
Okay.
Here's the application that was submitted. Scott Reno was the, he's the person who lives there and is operating the business, and then Linda Miller is the title holder. I don't know if there's a relation there or not.
We may find out.
That's right, Mel. Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Manny. Applicant, representative applicant?
This is my husband, Scott Reno. We live at 2825 Summit Vista Drive. After all of that, I guess I'm kind of changing what I'm going to say, since he just briefed you on everything. I don't need to, I guess. The house is still currently owned by my mother, but we are currently buying the house on contract. My family has lived in that house for over 25 years, so the integrity and character of the neighborhood really do mean a lot to me, which is why we are wanting to do what we're doing so that we can keep our equipment out of sight. We are, we have a permit for a fence, and we want to make our neighborhood look nice. We have, what, three mowers that we, he uses for his business that we also use for our home. So all of our equipment is used for personal use, as well as his side mowing business.
That's about it.
And we really appreciate you listening to us and taking the time to allow us to speak.
One of the questions I got, you saw all those red marks, and those were people who were against it. Have you talked to any of your neighbors?
I have talked to several of our neighbors who live across the street that literally I have known since I was five. And they told me that they regretted sending in the cards, saying they were against it, and if they could go back, they would. They are not here today, but, so all you can take is my word on that.
Well, and the other one is the neighborhood group sent, and they're opposed on all counts on that, so you didn't talk to them either?
Nobody, nothing has been said to us about that, no.
Okay.
I didn't, if I would have known that, then I would have contacted our neighborhood association.
When did that letter come, Mel, do you know? Because you weren't here at the last meeting, were you?
No, we were, no.
The neighborhood association's comments were sent to Jason Van Essen on Tuesday, the 21st of this week.
Okay.
That's all I see here.
Is there concern just the trailer or everything that we're doing?
Well, I think at this point, what, the concrete, it was, is one point, but it's the outdoor storage. I think Mel was alluding to that from standpoint that that, that outside storage really belongs in an M1 type of environment. It's not even allowed in a C2. So outdoor storage, and that's usually what gets a lot of the neighbors excited, and that's, that's what probably is going to be the issue here.
It's just, I mean, I, not to, it's just really kind of, this whole thing has been kind of a surprise to us because we've been in that house for two years and nobody had a problem with it until we started doing our concrete. And I, I wanted the opportunity to speak so that we could hopefully ease our neighbors' minds, and that what we're really wanting to do is help our neighborhood look better. We don't want to, I mean, like I said, I've lived in that house since I was five years old. I love that neighborhood. I would never want to make that neighborhood look bad. And that is our goal and our hope with all of this is to retain the quality of that neighborhood.
Okay. Mel, Brooke?
Is it possible to put this trailer inside your garage?
No, it is not. It's about two and a half foot.
Too long?
Yeah.
Mel?
Prior to, in your picture here, I see you do have some concrete where the trailer is now. Did you pour that recently?
Yes.
Okay, so if you've been in the house two years, have you been doing the lawn care stuff with the trailer for two years from there?
That's right.
So where were you parking the trailer before?
In the street or on the side of the driveway where my truck is.
Or in front of the driveway.
Okay.
Which is why we're wanting to do what we're doing now.
Right, because you really can't park it in the street.
Exactly. To get it off the front of the property, that's our, was our whole goal with what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Brooke?
A question, can this be enclosed as like a, I don't know if it's a two-car garage, I presume?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Can you make it, in this sense, a two-and-a-half-car garage and enclose this area? Not that you want the expense.
Right.
I understand.
The, the property line is just about a foot off of the right-hand side of that slab there, and I don't know if there are many variances as far as buildings on lot lines. So I, I.
Well, and we can probably find out from staff on that, but the idea is, and Brooke's leading it to, is that if we can get it from outside storage, I think it's going to make a lot of people a lot happier.
Well, the, there is a house, just two houses to the east of us, that have the exact same thing. I don't know what they store behind there, but it is a six-foot fence that has the third stall in their driveway, and it is the exact same thing that I am trying to do.
You didn't have to bring a picture of that, do you?
I, I did not.
And how many blocks away?
It's, it's just two houses down to the east of us.
Is it on the map?
Once we build the fence, you would not be able to see the trailer.
It would be.
It's still considered outside storage, though. I understand.
No, and I understand that, but I.
This property is right here.
Can you see it on that one better there?
Yep. Well, I don't know if you can actually see it.
Thanks, Brooke.
It would be right there. Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
You can see people.
Actually, it's, it'll be this property here, so it, it would be this property, that way.
Can you zoom out a little bit there?
It'll be this property right there by pinpoint.
And where do you, oh, right there.
We are right here.
And what's the activity at this other property you're referencing?
I don't know, but they, they have the same.
Have the same driveway and the fence comes up.
They have the same setup that we are wishing to.
Okay, but what, are they storing lawn care business equipment there, or what are they doing?
We don't know.
Okay.
But we are just saying, I guess, our, maybe our point is.
For the look of it, it is the same look in the neighborhood that.
Okay, so they may be just parking a car there or something, but you're not.
I have no idea what they're doing, and I guess it, you know, really doesn't make a difference to me, to be honest with you. I, I guess that if, if I was into, you know, maybe riding motorcycles or something, and I had the same trailer that had motorcycles on it for me and my buddies to go riding on.
Yes.
It would be there, and nobody would be able to see anything on that trailer.
Right.
And, and it would be locked, and, you know, for a safety and for theft.
Now, you, besides lawn care, do you do snow removal and that kind of stuff?
No, I do not.
So at this time of the year, you're not, you're obviously not mowing lawn?
That's correct.
So the, so the trailer's going to sit for a couple months yet till we green it?
Yep.
Okay. Then do you have seasonal employees, or is this kind of your, this is just you? This is your deal?
Just me, yep.
Okay.
I have about 15 to 18 accounts, which is kind of depending on the summer.
Okay.
I don't make a lot of money doing it, but it's something to keep me busy and go take care of my wife and kid.
Cool. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Brooke?
I guess, Juan, the difference in this is this is a home occupation versus just storing personal items, two houses east. Is it possible to put any type of fence and gate around this slab of concrete?
Yes, that is what we have been approved for.
We have a permit to do that.
We have a permit to do this.
Oh, so you are thinking of, can you describe that?
It would be six foot from our grade, off of our grade. It will have a double swing gate on the front with a lock, and it will go all the way down the side of our property.
Do you want to show this and show them that it would just come, we would just extend what we already have?
Whoops. Kind of tricky. Yeah, but if you could, yeah. It would, it would come from the fence that we have here, come all the way down the side here, and a double gate from the side of the garage to the end of the concrete. And the maximum height on the profile of the trailer is approximately four and a half feet. And I had figured that from the top of that slab, the fence would come up about five and a half, but that would be the top of it. So then there would be over a foot of fence above the height of the trailer and its contents.
I get, I don't recall seeing that in the, in the notes, that's why I brought it up. And I would think that would also make a difference to the neighborhood, I would, I would presume. I don't want to presume anything, because I presume there may be some neighbors here that could comment.
That's what we'll find out.
We had, we had just gotten the same letter yesterday that was, I think Manny discussed it right before we got up here. And, I mean, I was a little bit shocked that there was nothing about our fence permit on that. So I was hoping that it was just kind of a clerical oversight or something, because I didn't understand, I mean, it's kind of hard for me to understand all of the legal wording and stuff like that in, in this, but, you know, there was nothing about a fence, and I was hoping that, you know, once you guys knew that, you know, we were going to be, that would hopefully, you know, resolve some of our issues.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support?
Good afternoon. I'm Linda Miller, and if you notice it, the home is in my irrevocable trust, and so I am homeowner, and I am in support of what they're doing. And I agree with the neighbors that it can't be in front, up front in, in plain view. And Scott and Jessica have assured me that with the fence, the fence will come up, it will be locked, and nobody will be able to see that equipment. And they're good kids, I trust that they're going to do what they need to do. I am the property owner, so therefore it is very important to me that they maintain the integrity and the character of the neighborhood, is as what they were saying, because, like they said, we'd lived in that house for over 25 years, and I lived in it until after my husband was killed in the plane crash. Then I sold, I moved and I sold it to Jessica and Scott. So I do trust that they will certainly uphold their word in maintaining the integrity of the property and put the fence up with the double gate, because I'll make sure they do. Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition?
Hello, my name is Jerry Michael, formerly Gerald Michael, owner of the property at 2812 Summit Vista. There's a few things. I personally am concerned about the zoning variance, not just because of this property, for future properties in the neighborhood. Little bit concerned that, you know, this may open up a can of worms for future, for other people to be doing businesses as this in the neighborhood. One item I rebuttal to what's been said, we have talked to some of the neighbors, and some of the neighbors are, they, they like to be friendly to fellow people in the neighborhood. So some people, you know, they object to it, but at the same time, they, they don't want to get into confrontations with other neighbors. So I can't speak exactly what neighbor was being referred to, but I know that there was a neighbor who is against it, but we really not want to let it be known that they are against it. They're, not because they're afraid, they're afraid in a way of not being a good neighbor, but they're, you know, I don't think they're afraid of like any consequence, you know, but they're just, you know, it's like, you know, you hate to stir up things, you know, when you have to live across the street from somebody or something like that. That's, that's one point. As far as, as what's been taking place before this, it always has been kind of a nuisance to, you know, to have this equipment parked out front. And, you know, it takes a little bit more, it's more than just a car driving in, pulling out, you know, you're taking this equipment in and off the property, which is, you know, it's kind of like you're waiting for a business to, you know, transaction to, to take place. And one of my questions is also that, yes, possibly it looks better, but are, every time he gets through it, that is he going to put that thing right back in that fence, or is he going to leave it out when he's got another thing in the afternoon, or, or does it just go back to the way it was, you know, once they get an approval? That's one thing. Another thing is, is that it's been noticed that there is some 55-gallon drums that were stored on the property, and they have been moved to the backyard. We don't know what these 55-gallon drums are, but we don't know what's in them. There's a little concern as to what this might be. If it's a lawn care business, perhaps it's, I mean, people have speculated as to whether it could be a weed killer, or fertilizer, or oil, gasoline, who knows? Maybe they could be empty, I, you know, I can't say. But there is a little fear of that, and so we are concerned about, about that storage. So, and let's see. That's basically what my, my personal would be, that it would start a precedent, you know, to kind of infiltrate this time of business going into a. to kind of infiltrate this time of business going into our neighborhood and possibly, you know, before you get home, you get to drive by, you know, equipment being pulled out in people's property and kind of blocking traffic and just it becomes to be more of a, possibly a more rural look to it than a residential look, even though you hide it behind a fence, you know, there's still that transaction taking place, traffic wise and stuff. I think that pretty much-
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Any questions? So we did, we had a letter that we sent along with our proposal.
I do have one question. Mr. Michael, are you representing Southwestern Hills Neighborhood Association or a certain group?
I am the owner at 2812 Summit Vista.
Okay, because you said we had sent a letter, I wasn't sure if you were-
My wife and I.
All right, okay. Well, that's quite a team to start with, so, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I can understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak in opposition?
Hi, I'm Wendy DeVries, I live at forty-one-twenty Southwest Twenty-Eighth Street, just around the corner. I did get a postcard, I did not see it and we returned it, I didn't see it up on me. We oppose it, this is a very nice, quiet residential neighborhood, I've lived there for thirty-five odd years myself. This is just not what these kind of neighborhoods are for. You know, we're there to enjoy our peaceful, quiet neighborhood and I don't see this kind of heavy equipment business going on necessarily in my neighborhood being an improvement of any kind. That's about it.
Questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in opposition?
My name is Glenda Kernan, I live at the house referenced twenty-eight fifteen Summit Vista Drive. I would like to clarify one thing that was mentioned, that I do have a four-wide drive. It was there when I bought the property. It was placed there by the previous owners with the intention of parking their large travel trailer. At that time, the neighborhood disapproved of that and they were forced to move their travel trailer and store it in another place. I have nothing stored on it, never intend to do so. I hope that will clarify why, and this is a professionally done, gutted drive that, you know, drains well and things, so I do want to clarify that. You have my three letters on record, or you should have copies of them, so I hope that they were succinct enough for you to understand that I have given this a great deal of thought. No better people on earth could have been but Harry and Linda Miller. That place was immaculate when they lived there and I cared for them very much, they did many favors for me. They were active in the Neighborhood Association, but I'm sorry, since Linda has left, it has gone downhill. Now, to address the present thing that we're talking about. If the slab is any indication of what the work is going to be like if it is allowed, heaven help us, there's no way for that to drain, no easement, no anything. It was not a professionally done thing, so it makes me wonder what next we find there. I would like to say that I have walked, I have a broken hip, but I took this seriously enough to walk four blocks in every direction of my home. Nowhere did I see anything parked in the drives but people's vehicles. I saw no commercial ventures of any kind. It's just not that it would set a precedence, which it possibly would, but I ask you to think about going over to the east side of Des Moines, where there's a mix of commercial and housing. And you think about what you think about those neighborhoods there. We don't want that to happen with our neighborhood. I'm sorry, the young man does not have the money to go and find a place to store his In Bedford, Iowa, where I come from, it's a small town, two thousand, no one is allowed to park their truck, their trailer, there are nothing there. And that's a small town, so you have to take your truck someplace else, you have to take any business someplace else. No self-respecting horse in Taylor County would go into that trailer. I would also like to speak to the idea of noise. There has been an increase in noise. We have noticed it.
About one more minute.
Okay, very quickly, twice within the last two months, we have been awakened thinking our house was being hit. We ran out to see what was happening and it was down the way. And I am sure we will have increased noise as this, if this business is allowed to be placed there. I hope I have been succinct enough to let you know that there's just more than me, there's a great number of people who are not here who do oppose this and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Glenda, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
You mentioned there's been increased noise and I saw that in your letter. Was- do you think maybe that was just a once or twice thing because they were building the slab or what kind of activities were occurring that you saw?
No, it's just been a general increase in noise.
I mean, are they repairing lawn and garden equipment or-
Yeah, repairing, working on the equipment, driving it in and out, and like I say, I don't know what was being pounded on, but, you know, at nine o'clock at night, that's not so good.
Okay.
And we knew where it was coming from because we went and looked to find out. So it's been a general, and I kind of assume if this business does increase, we will have increased activity and increased disturbance from this place. I hope that answers you.
Yes, thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak in opposition? Ms. Reno, you've got three minutes to rebuttal or closing comments.
Well, I guess I'm not even really sure where to start after that, but I can say one thing that I'm glad I don't live in Taylor County.
I don't go there.
And as far as the draining and the craftsmanship, this is a very, very fine slab. As you can see here, there is a drainage that comes from my eve that runs all the way underneath that concrete into my backyard. There's a four-inch curb to keep the water contained so that it does not go into my neighbor's land. I have not moved that trailer since the end of November, so for anyone to say that the last two and a half months have been noisy and in and out and in and out is absolutely false. I do not work at all past eight P.M. and I would not be out in the wintertime working on my mowers in January.
The other day you were working on your snow blower, but it's winter.
Right. And that was to blow snow in my own driveway, so I guess if I can not work on my snow blower at, you know, sometime during the day, then I guess that I'm kind of at a loss with what she had to say because I don't see that the look of the property has gone downhill since she has lived there. We keep nothing in the front yard, we keep nothing in the backyard, which I don't know how anyone can even see back there.
Those drums that you did bring home are-
It is always mowed, my snow is always clean.
And those drums that were mentioned earlier are empty, my husband brought them home to turn into water barrels.
Sorry.
Sure.
Pretty huge.
Yeah, for-
Yes, for our garden in our backyard.
A rain garden.
Yes, rain garden.
Thank you. I guess I don't know where to go with any of this other than that, so thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Any last questions for staff? What about the fence, does that- do you guys know about that or?
The proposal for a fence?
Yeah.
This is the first that they've mentioned.
How does that affect everything?
I mean, they just have to meet the zoning criteria for a six-foot fence in the side yard.
And they can store their equipment outside then?
No, not at that knee.
That's what I thought. So you'd still have to put a roof or something over it?
It'd have to be in an enclosed structure.
But then they'd have to get some other variances because they'd be too close to the property line for that.
R-180, they have a ten-foot-
So the staff is prepared to support the driveway flare-
Correct, and the home occupation.
Right, okay.
Special permit.
Just not the outdoor storage?
Correct.
Okay, Brooke?
I think one gentleman mentioned the neighborhood concern of it, business is continuing or popping up and I think that we may want to clarify the difference between a variance and a special permit and, because if it's a special permit, it's only for the beat for those people why they're there, is that correct?
Stays with the property, doesn't it?
Correct.
The owner.
Okay, so it's gone then.
Yeah, and I know the gentleman mentioned that if it was a variance, I think he's correct, that it would stay, but a special permit, which is what the staff recommend, is different.
Okay. Thanks, Brooke. Any other questions? Close the public portion, go to board decision.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think since I'm a south sider, I might lead off with a couple comments here, it's slightly out of my ward, but the first thing I noticed is I appreciated the presentation by Jessica and Scott and everybody either for or against, good decorum to start our session today, so I do like to see that. It tells me that everybody cares about their neighborhood, cares about their neighbors, that's good, but we do too up here and so I think that's why we have some tough decisions to make, especially when we want to look at granting some kinds of variances or exemption or special permits here. I do remain concerned that we've got a use being proposed that isn't even allowed to occur on Southwest Ninth or Army Post Road or even Southeast Fourteenth for that matter and the C-two. And I think it is important to consider keeping our residential neighborhoods just that, residential neighborhoods. I know there was comment made about, look at the east side, well, I don't care if it's the east side, west side, south side, I care the same about every neighborhood. But in this neighborhood particularly, when you look at the mix of different types of residential homes here, there's some affordable houses, there's some houses that knock your socks off, I get just lost driving in here, as you can see on this map, just to get in and out of here would be a difficult challenge, so. But when I look at this neighborhood and I look at what the Southwestern Hills Neighborhood Association said, they said in summary, this is a residential neighborhood and it's not meant as a business park or commercial storage area. And I think no matter what we would consider, we'd be camouflaging the fact that we're allowing a commercial storage area in a residential neighborhood. But to give Jessica and Scott some credit, I'd like to find maybe some time that they could be given to find a location, since he's not really using the trailer right now, maybe give him ninety days or something to kind of get this figured out, I don't know if staff really likes that idea of, you know, some kind of temporary thing.
I think Sue Ann gets- has to keep-
Yeah, but-
But I'm thinking along the same way.
But just to, you know, drop the hammer on him, hey, it has to be out with, you know, by the time you sign that thing in thirty days or you're in trouble. But if somebody runs a commercial business, as he does, even though it's small, he's got contacts, he's got clients, he might be able to find a way where he could drop that trailer at night at a location that's secure for him and work out a deal with that property owner, mow his lawn in exchange for it and grow his business even further. Because eventually, if he wants to grow his business, he's gonna run out of room here the way it is, so. So I would support the staff recommendation, you know, which would include the exception for the square footage of pavement in the front yard, but it would deny the variance on the requested home occupation with the outside storage.
Giving them a ninety-day window to-
Just to get the conversation started, that's what I'd like to put out there.
With the fence, though?
Well, the, I mean, the fence would be kind of an irrelevant deal, I mean, I don't think he'd need the fence for ninety days, I don't think he'd probably build it in the next two months anyway. I'd just like to give him ninety days to find a home for his trailer offsite.
Yeah.
Yeah, unless he can put it inside, maybe, you know, get a shorter trailer and don't have cabinets at the back of your garage, that's what I had to do. Not for a home-based business.
So that's your base of emotion?
Yeah, is that good enough? So I'd move staff recommendations with a ninety-day-
Enforcement period?
Yes, how's that?
For Sue Ann, she- good with that?
Is that acceptable? Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It moved in second, is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries five to nothing. And ma'am, I'm sure they'll probably need some questions answered if you've got a chance. Item eight is a variance at twenty-seven fifteen East University.
We do have an updated sketch of their sign elevation, which modified their request slightly. It shrinks the area down to thirty-two square foot sign area. It's being proposed for the electronic component. What they did is the original, I think, showed the exterior dimensions of the cabinet, which is all we had to go off of from the application, so they've given us a little bit of a revised, the notification is still adequate because it was for an area bigger than what they're actually proposing, so it still keeps it in the variance category because this zoning type does not allow the type D type sign electronic display anyway. And looking at this, staff noted that the corridor in itself has kind of two characters. You have the, C-two is predominant on the north side of university, East University, whereas C-one is on the south. And some of this is as a result of the fairground neighborhood had a different approach to how they wanted the corridor to address their neighborhood. So some of the zoning difference is the difference between how the neighborhoods that are on either side of East University have viewed that. There is some C-two, for instance, as you get here to the east thirtieth corner right across from the fairgrounds, this is the last stop liquor shop and then east from there to the Quick Trip is C-two. So there is some C-two as you go east towards the intersection where East Thirtieth and East University meet. Again, with this business, they've been to you in the past to allow the display activity out in the front, grass areas for their equipment, and that was granted. They do have a few signs already on their building, but they do not have a freestanding sign at this time. So you can see they have signage that is can lead root off the building. Again, they have sort of two buildings that are connected by a middle building over time. If you're looking at it from the far west, you can see that each building has a sign and where, those are treated as the wall signage earned based on the occupant frontage of those buildings to the public street, so I know it's kind of hard to see that light fluctuating back and forth. That light's fluctuating back and forth. When you're looking at the allowance for the electronic component, that's a variance in itself, then you have to demonstrate unnecessary hardship under the criteria to grant the variance, and staff was looking at the basis for the applicant's desire to have this sign. Their concern is based on the economic conditions of the time and not having the business that they really need to maintain their standard for the way their operation should go. However, there's nothing unique about the property in itself that we believe prevents them from maintaining a reasonable use of the property. The other thing is, in terms of character, there isn't a proliferation of electronic signs up and down this corridor. So if this was the only C-1 property, everything around it was C-2, and they all had been given electronic signs by right, that might have changed the character a little bit. In this case, there's some electronic billboards, which are really considered separately from signage that businesses earn, and then there is a couple of electronic signs at the Walgreens and the fairgrounds at the East 30th intersection have monochrome display readouts. They're both zoned such that they can have that allowance. And in fact, the fairground is actually just was able to erect it by right under the fact that they're sovereign compared to the municipal...
How much of the sign is it like...
A little bit more than half, I would say.
Just that bottom part?
Yeah, this portion.
Okay.
And, you know, the way that the image is described, it's clearly a color display, full color, that they would be able to display photographic-type images.
All that can change.
Yeah. And staff is... Just doesn't believe it meets the test for the variance to allow you to grant it. Now, that said, if the board determines that there is, I think we do have limitations in those places where we do allow these types of signs that we would hope that would be imposed if you did grant this type of sign. Those would be dimmer control, the fact that we don't want static... We want static displays and not to change more than eight seconds, every eight seconds. That prevents distraction to passing motorists, so those are key components that if you believe that the appellant has demonstrated a variance and you are inclined to grant the sign, that some conditions you should consider if you're allowing the sign.
Eric, go ahead, Linda.
I just have a couple of questions.
Probably the same ones I'm going to have, so...
There was an East University beautification plan. Where is that, and how does this fit in with that?
I don't think it probably spoke to electronic signs. It spoke for a desire to have monument-based signs, for the freestanding signs.
Right.
We have not changed our zoning regulations to only allow the monument signs at this point, but the East University plan did make that recommendation, that signage for freestanding signs be limited to monument-type signs.
Yeah, and I think that's what they've worked... I mean, it seems like that's what we've worked real hard for, yeah. I didn't even think we could do pole signs anymore. Is there... Tell me...
I think that there was a consideration of changing that, and in the proposed draft for the new ordinance, there's some consideration for C-1 areas. I think we would have the monument-type signs. C-2, I think there would still be an allowance for pole signs as it's proposed, given that that's more highway-oriented type corridors and that the pole signs are more appropriate for visibility's sake on a highway corridor. And the other thing is, we would make a large number of properties nonconforming by switching to the pole signs, and so the RNO has looked at that. They've sent recommendations up. Right now, the council has chosen not to proceed until we've moved with the entire draft, so...
When I... Because I'm a call, anyway. When we allow them to do outside display, to me, I think of that as a sign, as additional advertising. See it out front, and there it is. When I drive by there, and I drive by there many times a day, there's always a lot of stuff out there. I don't... I don't see what another sign is going to do. I mean, to me, they've already got... In fact, I see little, like, outhouses, or I don't know what those little things are, little houses that they've got there in the front, and there's, you know, there's always a lot of stuff out.
They might be little compost cinders or something.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it just seems to me that, I mean, you can't drive by there and not know that that's there.
Sure. And I guess staff isn't really in their analysis of it questioning the marketing motives of what they believe they need or what they don't.
Yeah.
And we may be able to speak to the effectiveness of placement, or size, or scales, you know, in some regard. I can tell you that this size of display, even if this was a C-2 district, would be too large, and they'd be in front of you anyway for the size of it. So even by right in a C-2, this wouldn't be permitted.
Okay.
Because it's larger than the 24 square feet.
So it's even larger than... Okay. And you didn't see a hardship? I mean, that's what the recommendation is.
Right. We didn't see anything about the property in itself that made it... Put them at a disadvantage where they needed this treatment on the ordinance to waive that requirement, waive that limitation, so...
Brooke, just, Eric, help me clarify. The sign itself of 74 square feet is...
That would be the overall sign.
Yeah, but that's acceptable.
And that maxes out what they earn.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then in the C-2 district, it's limited to 24 square feet for the electronic part, correct?
Right. Yeah. That would be as they're proposing it, because they're showing full color display and that type of thing. If you go over 24 square feet in a C-2, then there's a lot of limitations that we put into place.
Okay. I guess my question is, and I'm not arguing, just for clarification in my mind, if they have a sign that is... They can have a sign this big. If they lowered the electrical component to 24 square feet, is that... That still doesn't meet the code, does it?
That doesn't make sense in a zoning district, but if you're trying to make this area comparable to C-2 districts, then, you know, that would fall in line with that.
That's what I was... I just was trying to clarify. That's all I was after.
Again, when we looked at it, we could sort of distinguish two sides of the corridor.
No, I'm just trying to get the dimensions.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, that would be... You're correct, yes.
But the East University beautification was for either side of the street?
Yeah. It's the entire length of the corridor in the city. But again, I don't believe it really mentioned electronic signs by there.
It was before electronic signs.
Or at the dawn of them, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Eric. Applicent or representative of the applicant?
Oh, I'll show you. There's the one card that got passed around.
Thanks, Eric.
Chairman, board members. I'm Jeff Nicholson, 2715 East University. I'm the owner of P&amp;P Small Engines. Let me get a couple of pictures out, just to start off here.
Get one on the center, and then you can set it on top of it. Hopefully, then, you can just set directly on top of it. Not lighting it up, too, because the sun keeps messing with our back light.
That is approximately three blocks away from us, down there at the state fairgrounds. And you've got Walgreens that's just about a half a block closer. If you go farther to the west, you've got A&amp;W. Dairy Zone is actually on the same side of the street as this, so I'm not sure if there's own C-1 with us or not. That wasn't in the staff report.
Is that electric?
That is an electronic component, just wasn't on, which is probably why it got missed and wasn't in staff report.
That's lower part.
Yeah, it was on today as I went by there. I've even got a video of it if you want to see it. And then as you go just within a half mile of us, as you get to Hubble, you've got Des Moines Feeding Garden Shop with electronic component. This is right where Hubble meets University, Taco John's. And then this big giant sign right here is within 200 feet of my shop. Clear Channel put this up. I want to say a year, but the years have gone by faster every year. Within the last two years, that went up. That gets a lot of attention. We do have a lot of stuff out front. We do get some drive-by traffic. That grabs a lot of attention. I don't think we get the attention that we did two to three years ago. I think an electronic component of our own out towards the road might get attention back on us before they get past us. The other thing an electronic component would do for us is people don't understand all that we have to offer. We, you know, we fix all different brands of outdoor yard equipment. People don't know that. If they drive down the road and see that, they're going to know it. They don't know that we finance there. They don't know that we compete with the big box stores. We're in an environment where everybody thinks it's cheaper at the big box stores. Those type of messages, I want to get to our customers, and I can't do it through the paper like I used to on the same scale. I don't know how many of you still get the paper, but eight years ago, it was easy. Put an ad in the paper, people brought the paper in the door. That doesn't happen anymore. The advertising is so fragmented, it's hard to put your money in the right place. And last year, I struggled. I mixed it up. Whatever I did didn't work. For the first time in nine years, we showed a net loss. I can't continue to be there and show a net loss. So as far as the questions, a reasonable rate of return, I guess I would say that a net loss, I wouldn't consider a reasonable rate of return. You know, I would say you need to make a profit to even say that you're having a reasonable rate of return. And to do so, I need to reach new customers. I need to let the people drive them by. We get a traffic count of 24,000 every day. I think some of it's going to stick as they come through there, if I have a digital message port out there. Do the math on that. That's eight million people, over eight million people a year coming right down through there. Some of them are the same, but if I'm on the top of their mind when they need something, they might think about us a little more than they had before. Walgreens, I was told, will not go into any community if they can't have a digital message center right now.
Brooke?
As staff said, we shrunk the size originally. I was talking with the sign guys, and I wanted to... I told him to go as big as I could. Well, I didn't realize that that got me outside of what was allowable across the street in the C-2. So we shrunk it down. We're asking for 32 square feet of electronic message center. If that is out of the question, we would ask that you would at least consider the 24, which is in keeping with the other businesses around us. Obviously, we like where we're at. We think the traffic is our biggest plus, where we're at. There's traffic coming by all the time, and I'm trying to find a way to use that to our advantage, so...
Brooke, a couple of questions.
Sure.
You said you're asking for 32?
We should... The size that he had on this last drawing here...
Yeah.
The actual electronic component of it is 32 square feet.
Could you just outline with your finger, whatever, what...
Yeah, that is right here.
Okay, so it's...
The cabinet that's around it that's a little bit bigger, but the electrical components are the 48 by 96.
But the actual sign itself is 32 square feet?
Entire sign itself comes into that 74 square.
Yeah, but the electrical portion is 32 square feet.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then you said, I'm just trying to understand, if you had to, you could work with the 24 square feet?
I would rather have...
The 32, I understand.
I would rather have a... No, I would rather have a 24-square-foot sign and no electronic component at all. Yes.
Okay. And one other question, and you don't have to answer it if you don't want to. It's without this sign, you're... In your mind, you would have to consider moving somewhere that would be more conducive to what your needs are?
I would say so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff?
I have a question for staff. If we were to allow the 24-inch, the sign that he wants, does he have to take down other signage? Or can he still keep all of his other signage?
The freestanding sign is calculated separately.
Separate, okay.
There may be, and we're... I think our zoning staff is looking at his total signage amounts and what was given permits and so forth, and that would be treated independently.
Okay.
Of this request, because he does not have a freestanding sign at this time, and he earns the 75 square feet maximum for one freestanding sign based on his occupant frontage, and that really maxes out what's allowed in C-1 for freestanding.
So he can have a freestanding sign that's not electronic?
Right, and it can be a pole or a monument-type sign.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Eric, and I don't want to put you on the spot excessively on this, but you saw a lot of pictures that he had flashed up there. And to your knowledge, just with anything you saw, was there anything that looked like, "Oh gee, I didn't know about that one"?
They're all following what's standard, kind of the standard allowance. Again, if it's under 24 square feet, it can pretty much do anything, right?
Okay.
It can flow and spell, right, in C-2 district.
Right, and a C-2, but this is a C-1 district, correct, on this side of the street?
Right.
Okay.
And C-1, there are... If this was a site over a certain area, it could also have it, but, you know, that would be a very large...
To your knowledge, did staff discuss with him what the maximum allowable could be, or is it just because it's the lighted in the C... It's because it's electronic in the C-1?
Well, the other thing is, is electronic display would normally be required to separate from a residential property as well, within 100 feet.
And we have that situation here?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Technically, if this was a C-2, we'd be asking for a variance of this.
Got it.
Because it's over 24 square feet.
Okay.
And that would require it then to be 100 feet from a residential property, on a property that's 100 feet from a residential property.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Close the public portion, then go to board decision.
Oh. Oh, my.
I'll start.
You know, I mean, there are other signs in the neighborhood that are right there. It... I mean, if you go across the street, he could have that sign, so why not allow him on that side of the street? I hate to see us get in a precedence where everybody's now going to come and want a sign, and we're going to end up with all this stuff on East University, but...
Which is what can happen.
But, you know, cut it down to 24, and I would...
What about lowering it? You know, I'm tired of the proliferating...
Right.
I mean, the new ordinance is making pole signs, you know...
Shorter?
And that's...
It is?
Well, or, you know...
Should.
Like Eric says, or dual-way.
It's like monument signs.
There we go.
Right.
I don't have as much of an objection to letting them have that as I do being a pole sign, because as you drive down East University, you got enough. I'm telling you, it's just... It's just like the asphalt jungle. I just, ugh! You know, if we can... If we can help his business out, but keep it down to the ground.
Right.
I mean, I'd rather see it keep around that area.
A conundrum with this one is, you know, as Jeff, the appellant, presented, you know, "Hey, I got to advertise my business." I'm sure if everybody got to have balloons and flashing lights and whatever, we'd all advertise. advertise our businesses better. But that wouldn't help our city, I don't think. And we did have a case a couple of months ago with Earlham State Savings Bank, where it was a C1 on Southwest 9th, and he wanted to advertise bonds and CD rates. We just said, no, we're, and he just said, well, it'd allow me to advertise, it'd be more competitive. I'm sure it would, but it wasn't a hardship.
That's right.
But also recognizing what Jeff said, I'd, I'd like to see it brought down to a little closer scale. You know, I, I do give some credence that because it is on this other side of the street, it does border some houses. It's a kind of that quieter side of the street. I'd like to see it toned down a tad. I mean, he gets some exposure from, as Linda referenced, the outside storage, and I've, I've been to P&amp;P, they're a great business. I've been to his competition over at East 9th and University. I, I think if you're looking for a lawnmower, or you're looking for a lawnmower repair of quality, you know, there's only a few places around that do that. But if, he's got stuff he can sell and finance. I'm not opposed to it, but the way it is, I, I don't like. I think it's a little, it's a little too in-your-face.
You have something, Eric?
Mr. Chair, the, because you asked me up for comments?
Yeah.
And ask questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think that the appellant was wanting the opportunity to rebut one of the comments that I made in response to your question.
Well, since this is new territory. Normally, it's not allowed, but.
Well, the one thing I did want to add is the two houses on the.
You're supposed to only rebut. We don't want, you can't be adding stuff. What were your?
What did Eric say?
Yeah, that you wanted to rebut.
Well, it was on the, the houses being close to the sign, within 100 feet. Those houses are owned by me. They're, they're properties that I own, and I, I just want.
You rent those?
I rent those, yes. On the corner there of East 27th Street, so 900, 913 and 909.
This property is in, in the commercial district still. This property would be a residentially zoned property, which would be subject to that separation.
It's 100 feet of the property, not the sign, right?
Yeah, it's from their property that the sign is on?
Right.
To the property in question. So you're not measuring from the sign to the house.
Yeah, right.
Okay, thank you. Back to board decision. So we started on a path here. Brooke?
Well, I think the gentleman makes a good case. It's, there's a lot of C2 up and down that street, and he, for some reason, is in C1. Who knows exactly why? It's a nice business. I go by there. I thought that, that he made a good, a good case. And since he's agreeable, and I think Linda said, go down to the 24 square feet, the monument versus the pole, I understand where you're coming from. Frankly, I like, I pay more attention to the monument signs than I do the pole signs.
Yeah.
Because I don't, I'm trying to not kill somebody in my car. So I, I think he's in a tough spot, so I would be more, I would be happy to have the staff decide with him the sign where. But I think we should give him the 24 square feet, and it, it makes sense to me.
I think so, too.
Can you live with the, can the applicant live with the 24? Can I just ask?
Sure. I need Jeff here.
Would it be, would it be helpful to bring it down? I mean, I think the consensus on the board, I don't know which way the vote's going to go, but it sounds like they want it brought down a little bit. Are you open to that?
Yeah.
Is that doable?
As far as the 24 square feet?
Yeah, if we gave it the 24, but then brought the sign, you want it shorter, right?
In height.
In height. We just don't want it.
I think similar to that Valero station over there on East 29th and East, that we just did last month.
There's some things going on. If it's a pole sign that close to the property line, you'd have to have a clearance of at least 12 feet below the bottom of it.
Well, that's a.
If it's a monument sign, then it has to be out of the vision clearance triangle, and it can't be any taller than eight feet.
Can you put the proposed sign picture back up there?
I think the monument sign on either corner is going to get into your site triangle. I think the monument sign is going to be low enough to the ground that ours at the corners are going to, would have a hard time seeing around that.
We could open up some other issues in that case, but.
That's, I agree, we don't want that.
Yeah, yeah, we don't. I'd like to know how tall it was proposed there for the pole height. Maybe we can.
It says 74.
They have 12 and a half feet clearance on the bottom.
Okay, just enough, then.
Yeah.
Okay.
They would be able to drop it six inches.
Okay. Well, remember, the Hardee's sign on, that's 40 feet in the air at East Euclid and 14th, so if he's only at 12, that's not too high. And that didn't need anything special.
Should we do it?
It's not what I'd do, but that's why we talk about it.
I know.
Now, what is it you would do, Bill?
I still want it, I don't want it.
You want it down?
I'm tired of pole signs.
Yeah.
And it's.
No offense.
Even though the city council hasn't voted on it, it's, it's in the plan.
Right. Well, I guarantee you that.
And the thing that bothers me is that, once that's there, it'll be there forever.
Right.
You know?
And Mill Civic in West Des Moines, they're all monuments. I guarantee you, that's a highway-oriented district, I would think.
The applicant brought up the fact that, that the concern may be that the.
If that's the case, I'm, I'd like that.
Yeah, there's not much we can do about that.
Right.
Eric, you know, would there be a clearance issue here?
Well, there's two types of clearance. There's the clearance of the intersection itself, which is the traffic code?
Yep.
Issue, and that's measured 70/30 on this type of, and it's an awkward intersection here because of the angle. But it would be measured from the tangent to the curb in both directions. It'd be 70 and 30 back. So if you had this imaginary point where these tangents cross right here, it would be, the triangle would be 30 feet south and 70 feet to the east, and then you draw the hypotenuse, and anything inside that would be, have to be two feet or lower.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Geometry.
Trying to keep the geometry terminology out of it, but I don't.
Thank you.
Having flashbacks here. Very good.
Then there's also the, the driveway internal to the site, and we measure a 15 by 15, 45-degree angle triangle along the sidewalk to make sure pedestrian traffic isn't obscured at the entrance of the driveway into the street, so. And that is enforceable through zoning. And again, that would have to be three feet or below if it's within that 15. So when we look at monument signs, we, most of the time, we're trying to keep them out of the onsite triangle at the driveway where it intersects with the sidewalk. But on occasion, when we're near that intersection, we have to also be tangential, this 70/30 at this intersection.
Show me a bigger picture of that. I mean, I know where it is, but I'm just trying to see.
The thickness of our line.
Because when you pull into P&amp;Z.
Takes away. I mean, the other thing you have going on here is there, by, when you start putting out little islands for a monument-type sign?
Oh, I see.
You might be getting into some maneuvering, because when this was widened, I think they lost some of the setback from the university. So I'm not trying to defend them by any means in this situation, but that's the situation.
So in your opinion, Eric, it, we couldn't put a monument sign there?
Well, I think there might be an opportunity. I don't know if it would be the best for his purposes, for how he's trying to make it viewable to the public. I think you'll be very limited on this site because of.
Where it can go.
Of those sections of setback along the university.
And I think he's trying to hang in there with the other people that are already up in the airways, so.
Kind of matches the character of what's there.
Good or bad.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion.
All right, let's see.
I'm going to make a motion that we grant the variance to allow an electronic sign in a C1 district where the site area is less than 10 acres, and going by his proposal, installation of a 70-foot-square-foot freestanding pole sign that would include a 24-square-foot electronic component. Is that how we want to say it?
No greater than 24.
No greater than 24. And that's, I don't usually do signs, but, but I think in this case, it makes sense.
And, and Eric, when this is put together, not knowing how this vote's going to go, would it incorporate all the other standards that you guys have put on electronic?
Standards I was speaking to dealt with signage, electronic signs that were in excess of 24 square feet.
Oh, okay.
So.
You wanted to flash signs and put the weather?
I mean, I guess if you don't want them to flash and scroll and spell and scintillate and animate and.
Oh, scintillate, wow.
But, but he's right. You do have that.
That's different.
Clear Channel sign.
Those are all language in the code, by the way.
Then I could see, when I come down from Pleasant Hill, I could see the Clear Channel sign. I mean, that's a huge monster.
Which was a whole separate ball of wax that got approved outside of us.
Those are the standards that were certainly developed around those types of signs, but.
They moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Four would be enough to pass anyway today, right?
Is that a yes?
It's a yes. Five to nothing. Put it down. I lost.
It's already in there.
Thank you. Okay, item nine, is variance in exception at 4316 42nd Street.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is regarding a garage addition. This is up on the northwest side. Get some light to it, so.
Yeah, it's a little dark.
Can you see it on your monitors?
Getting better.
What has changed today on the camera that we can't, oh, the sun glare?
They don't have the glazing on.
Okay. Oh.
This is the subject home. What's being proposed, and this is the site plan, so if you're looking at, at the home, which is east-facing, this is the current footprint. They would want to be putting this garage back and attached to an addition. The garage is right here now. Attaching it with the addition, it becomes part of the primary dwelling, therefore has to meet the rear yard setback, the side yard setbacks. There's other building and code implications, too, in terms of being connected. They all have to have frost-depth footings under the entire set of structures, whereas this garage by itself was small enough, it didn't require special depth footings for the structural element of it. This probably shows you a little better what's going on. Zoom out a little bit.
A little hot there.
Just to give you a sense of how it relates to the interior and where that connection is made is a door that enters into a vestibule within the addition. So the other thing is, this gives a better sense of what opening is remaining here to make entry into the garage possible. If they meant the side yard setback in full, it would be shifted quite a ways over with a very limited opening to get into this garage. Now, there is the alternative of not even having it attached, of moving the garage away from this addition, so that there's enough, that it would be still treated like a semi, a detached garage and a rear yard, and only having to have a two-foot setback. So in all practicality from the street, that's what it's going to look like. You're not really going to see that it's attached unless you're at a very obtuse angle. This is the architecture that's being proposed to blend it in with the house. I'll show you the consent map and you just know the cards that went by. We have looked at it, and we did not believe there was a hardship to the extent we could recommend in favor of a variance. So we're recommending denial of the variance by itself. What that causes it to do is have to shift half a foot to meet an exception. Now, the argument we've heard from the appellant is that that's very impractical in terms of the total project itself, but again, we don't see the, the hardship and can't recommend in favor of the variance, but we do think there's practical difficulty, given the placement of the home and the proximity of the property line to where the existing garage is located and so forth. We do want them to do this in substantial conformance with the designs that you saw, and then they need to meet all building codes, which includes possibly modif, you know, in this case, probably modifying the footings of the existing garage to make that work, getting it properly integrated into the house.
Brooke?
Eric, you're saying with an exception, he would still have to alter by six inches the garage?
Right, and what you're seeing here, this.
Isn't the garage already there?
Yeah, but what you're seeing, too, here, is that there's a, a footing that's exposed on this backside. So this gives you a better sense of the grade coming from the back. You're not really seeing that from the photo taken from the street. They are reviewing this grid.
The clarification is, the old garage is getting destroyed, right?
That's what virtue's indicating.
Yeah, that's what, that's what you're after.
I didn't understand.
Yeah, I, I, I needed that clarification, too.
I, I, that answers my question.
Yeah, so they are going to build a new garage. They're going to get rid of this one. What you're saying is shove it over six more inches.
The difference between what we're asking for and what they're proposing is what that entrance access is going to do coming in from the street, so.
Okay.
They're going to have less.
Garage door width?
And maneuver to the other space within the garage.
Right, okay.
I'll show you that drawing again. So by getting that, what was it, four feet, right? So half of seven is three and a half, so.
And is that the overhang that's being shown with the dotted lines there?
Yes.
Okay. And that overhang has to.
The overhang, if, the way our ordinance works, the building code treats the overhang as absolute.
Right.
The zoning allows for a portion of the two feet to extend into the setback.
Okay.
Once you go over the two feet, then it becomes, then your.
Gotcha.
Your virtual building wall goes with it.
Okay.
Goes with the two feet, yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Eric.
Hello, I'm Danita Faust, and this is my husband, Robert Hollingworth, and we own and live at that home at 4316 42nd Street. So we've been kind of planning for a couple of years that we needed to have a little bit more space, and we, our garage is in very poor shape. So we looked about buying a house, but we really love the neighborhood that we live in. Our son goes to Samuelson. We really didn't want to move out of that neighborhood, and we spent about a year looking, and there's not a lot of houses that are much bigger than the one that we own. That neighborhood was all built in the same timeframe, so it's very similar. We've also done a lot of work to our house. We waterproofed the basement. We sited it. We put in new windows. So a lot of the houses we were looking at had projects that we would have to do that we've already done in our home. So we started thinking about doing an addition, and to just, when we first, I really was kind of shocked to realize, when we started looking into this, that I couldn't just put my garage back at the same spot it already was. So when I first wanted to talk with the city, my understanding was that an exception, it was eight feet, and I'd have to move it four feet. I know now they're telling me that an exception would be three and a half feet off the property line. I was thinking that was four. So that's kind of why we went for the whole variance. But I just wanted to show you, the condition of our garage is very poor. That's part of the foundation. It's cracked all the way through, and we are planning to take everything completely out and start completely over. We've had specialists come in, and there's no salvaging any of that garage. At this point, it's not usable. Garage door doesn't really open very well, so we haven't been able to use it up to the inside floor, the garage. The whole frame is shifting off of the entire foundation. So we really have to do something with the garage. This is the back of the house, and this is, open area is where we want to put the addition, so the new addition will come out this part of the house and then hook up to the new garage. And our idea, idea was. And our idea was to put the garage in the exact same location. When we first found out that really it should be like seven or eight feet off the property line, we considered turning the garage so you'd come down the lane and turn into the backyard. That we feel like would really be a hardship for a lot of reasons. We have a tree back there that we really would not want to take out, and if we turned the garage, we'd have to. It would take up the majority of our backyard, so our dogs wouldn't have space. Our son wouldn't have space. Also, the way that we have the addition planned, there'd be a lot of windows to that side of the house, and if I had the garage on the other side of that, that would really limit my windows. Plus, you'd have a right angle turn, and coming back out of that to the driveway would just not really be doable. So, we really didn't want to do that. This is the space that we have currently between our garage and our neighbor's fence. Their fence is three inches to their side of the property line. So, there is space there. They seem to be okay with the garage being at that same location. And there's many garages in our neighborhood that are similarly that close to the property line. If you noticed, let me get that picture, the garage that we're proposing has a slanted roof, and we had a couple of reasons for that. First of all, the actual room addition, this section here, matches the whole character of the neighborhood in our current house because it is pretty much the same size as this front section on our house. So, it'd be kind of repeating that section in the back. It's also very similarly sized to, if you look at the side of the house, the shape and size of that. So, it kind of fits in with the whole character of the house to begin with. We have a little bit of a storage problem. My husband kind of likes to collect things, and we need some of that stuff to...
What kind of cool stuff.
It kind of gets to the point where it's like, okay, it needs to be out of the house and into the garage. So, this slanted garage idea is to put a storage space above that, and when we first were looking into the rules we had to follow, my understanding was we couldn't have the garage taller than seventeen feet from, I wasn't sure if that was from the ground or the floor because we have that big grave, so we have like three and a half feet of concrete in the back. But my understanding is it's from the floor, but if we attach the garage, I guess that's thirty-five feet, so we potentially could have that taller. But, so the idea is not to have a full room or anything up there, but a storage space. And then it's kind of like, how do you make that roof line work with that? We actually kind of got the idea from the house directly behind us. They have this slanted roof kind of thing. The house across the street from us, kitty corner, has also this slanted roof kind of thing. So, that kind of gave us the idea of maybe doing that to work it into the roof line. As far as drainage to our neighbor then, because you notice the slant goes toward our neighbor's property, we would have a gutter system. We have a garden back here, and we'd run the gutter down to the rain field to catch, to water our garden, is what we're planning to do with that area. So, I know that the staff is recommending that we put it three and a half feet from the property line versus the three feet that we're asking for, which is only six inches. However, I've just asked you to consider, like when you're parallel parking, six inches becomes a lot bigger deal than what six inches seems like. When you're looking at our current driveway, the way it is, this corner of the house is going to stay the same. I mean, that's going to be there. The addition is going to be where that fence is. So, if you move our garage over six inches, you're, you turn around this corner of the house, and the garage becomes a little sharper. There's still enough space there, but it does make it more difficult to back out of that position of the garage and around and back around. And if you have the house there, and we don't have a whole lot of space on this side, it's in a very snowy winter, you're starting to get snowbanks there, and that caused for a lot more stress with backing out for me in the morning on a very snowy day. If I had an extra six inches, it would be a lot more comfortable. So, that's what we're asking you to consider, three feet, six inches.
And it takes a lot to maneuver, what is that, a Mercury or Lincoln there?
Yeah, that was...
Yeah, Mercury.
That was his great aunt's car. She's ninety-eight now.
Those are cool.
Had that car for like seventeen years, and what does it have on it?
Ride like a clown.
Fourteen thousand miles on it.
Ooh, cool.
Yeah.
You could probably sell it today.
So, that's our proposal.
Any questions for the applicant?
One quick question. You mentioned your neighbor there that would be nearest to the proposed garage with the white fence.
Yes.
We do have some comment cards in support of you. One is at forty-three ten. I'm just going to say her first name is Michelle. Is that the neighbor that's right next to you?
No, they're across the street.
Oh, they're across the street.
My cousin and Mona live right next door, and we actually went over and spoke to them.
Did they fill out a comment card, or did you see them on the sheet as a yes for what you're proposing? If staff could maybe put that up for you and you could point to them?
But I will say, you've got a lot of green. That's a pretty good sign.
No, it doesn't look like, okay.
It was you pause. They didn't send it in. We talked to them verbally, and they said they were fine with it. I talked to them about the gutter thing. We actually went, we sent letters to the whole neighborhood. I did have two people call, one being the gentleman that lives directly behind us. He was concerned with the wording that I'd used that we're proposing to move our garage closer to his property line in the back, but we're not proposing that. I mean, if we can't get the extra six inches, I mean, another option would be to move the garage back a little bit so you have a little bit more space between the garage to clear that corner of the house, but we'd rather not do that.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board decision.
I wanted to point out one thing.
Yeah.
If they do move it back, then we'd have to revise the relief of the rear yard setback.
Okay, we want to do that?
Okay.
If you want to give them some leeway, it's still, I don't know what that would be within an exception. Because the rear yard area was an exception appeal. To kick it to a variance then would require some re-notification, but yeah, they would have, they would be able to go another seven feet back under an exception. So, I don't know if there's any thought to requiring them to maintain the three and a half, but knowing that they would desire then to push it back, you might consider some leeway in the rear yard setback relief.
Well, again, this is another case where clear presentation, nicely done. I'd almost rather have a nicer, bigger backyard, and we don't really use that little space between the fence anyway, and they've demonstrated, they have a two-car garage now. They just kind of want to build a two-car garage back. They're not going to have boat and RV storage out the you-know-what. I kind of see a hardship here to get it to all kind of fit. I understand what staff's doing, and I see what they're after, but I can see some hardships to make this design work, and if we give a little extra six inches, you know, I've got to pick and choose a few battles, and I don't think this would be one to rain fire on.
There's so much green around there anyway. Nobody's objecting.
Right, and if the neighbors didn't like it, I mean, she's saying that they support it, which we can, I can only take her word so much because the other person isn't here and didn't sign anything, but if they didn't like it, they sure should have been here to say they didn't, so.
Well, obviously, they know the work that they've been doing on the place.
Right.
There's nothing more than keep improving, keep improving. Those are the kind of neighbors you want to have.
Yes.
And I'd rather have them live here in Des Moines than move away.
And they're going to pay a lot more in property taxes with this improvement, so.
Hold it a minute. Don't forget, tax will be...
But down the road, it'll be a good investment for everybody.
There we go.
And you do now are in the NFC neighborhood, so you have a ten thousand dollars that you can use because NFC just approved Lower Beaver neighborhood.
That's right.
Is it a direct grant?
It's a...
Is it a direct grant?
It's a forgivable loan.
Oh, but just for clarification on the record, it's, as a forgivable loan, then basically it becomes a grant, or it's free money, right?
After a period of time.
After a period of time. You have to stay in the house and complete projects.
Twenty-five hundred bucks a year. Keeps coming off.
Yeah. So, it's actually free money.
They would just approve. Is that your neighborhood? No.
Well, hope the neighborhood leaders are listening out there.
Well, we're not doing any advertising.
Question?
No.
Melinda was looking at me like I was needing to spit it out.
No, I just threw that last item in just because...
Okay, do we, Mel, do you start out with a motion on that?
Sure, I'd make a motion to grant the appeal for a variance of four feet less than the minimum required, seven-foot side yard setback, and the exception of six foot less than the minimum required, twenty-six-foot rear yard setback.
I'll second that. Close to my hood.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hands, say aye. Motion carries five to nothing. You're in the neighborhood, so we get to drive by and see it ourselves, so.
Yeah, you have to give us a tour when it's done.
That's right. Item ten is a special permit and variance at five oh five Army Post Road.
Sure, thank you. You're awesome.
Mr. Chair members of the board, item number ten is a request for a special permit for special event signage, and they are also asking for a variance of the provision that limits such special permits to only two thirty-day time periods within a year. And the appeals would allow for display of a one-foot, one-point-one-seven-foot by ten-foot banner sign along Army Post Road from now until September thirty, 2012. The subject property is the Fort Des Moines Senior Housing Development being constructed on the north side of Army Post Road. Here's a photo of the sign. I had actually already put it up. You can see it's, the wind's had a hold of it a little bit, but I'm sure they'll straighten that out. They want to have that there until September. The zoning ordinance only allows them to request a special permit for two thirty-day periods, so they are wanting a variance of that provision. Here's another photo of the building under construction, and then the consent map. We had all of the cards come back, came back in support. Staff believes they've demonstrated the criteria necessary for granting the special permit, which would allow them to only have the sign up for two thirty-day periods or for a total of sixty days. We don't feel that they've demonstrated the criteria necessary for the variance, so we would recommend approval of the special permit so long as the sign is only displayed for sixty days. Condition number two, any sign shall be securely fastened to either a wall or to sign supports. And number three, any sign shall be in accordance with a special, or with a sign permit issued to a licensed sign contractor by the Permit Development Center. So, and then you'll see our staff report also goes on to say that if the board does feel inclined to grant the banner to be there longer than thirty, or longer than sixty days, we feel that they should use a material stronger than a plastic banner since the weather and other elements can cause the sign to become a eyesore, so.
Questions for staff?
One.
Would there be a permanent sign anywhere on the property saying this is...
Yeah, they would earn a, I believe it's twenty-four square foot sign. Actually, zone commercial, so it might be.
Is it in the, is it in the specs? My point is, if they're going to, let's say it's where this sign is now, for sake of argument. If they were going to put their permanent sign there, why couldn't we just have a...
Have the sign be here until they put the permanent in there? You could ask the applicant when they intend to build that sign.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Bert. See, you're chopping at the bits, so you must be the applicant.
Yes. My name's Tom Akers, and appreciate staff allowing me to come here and talk about that. To answer your question, yes, there will be a permanent sign right there. That sign will just read Fort Des Moines Senior Housing, five oh five Army Post Road. I never did want a banner sign or pull sign or monument sign or anything. I just want the address and the name of the building on the building. I want green space, and I don't really want a sign. Sixty days would be fine. I probably won't even need it for sixty days. This thing is already half rented up, and it's selling us out. As you can see, that's probably one of the greatest improvements on Army Post Rules ever happened, and my investor says, hey, I have to, it's a tax credit, section forty-two. They say you have to get this thing rented up at such and such time, and I'm now taking the applications and stuff. If staff has any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer.
No. Tom, as you referenced, this is one of the best things on Army Post Road in I don't know how many decades. I know it's been a vision you've had for many decades, and he's made it happen. It's really a great way to change this entire area of the corridor. So, I think this is great, and he's done a good job with all of his planning on this. The only thing I would say, Tom, the picture's worth a thousand words. Your sign ain't working the way it is.
I know.
So...
It started thawed, it froze and thawed, and I did straighten it out a little bit better, so if you went back to the picture, it looked better.
What I'm kind of wondering, just take some, just take some treated plywood and trim it and tack the sign onto the plywood so that, because I can't read it to know where to call.
I was considering using ropes and come across here.
Something, because our, our spring winds aren't going to do you any better on that than what our winter winds have been doing, so.
I already had one same blower, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I...
Yeah, I agree with you, Mel, because now...
I think it's a fine thing to have, yeah, and you've got to have some temporary notification to let people know, hey, I'm accepting applications. But if there's a way you can just kind of, and which, knowing Tom, he'll get it done. If there's a way you can just make that a little sturdier, I think your proposal's fine, and you don't have a problem then with the staff recommendations, the numbers one, two, and three, right? Okay. All right, in that case, I'd move staff recommendation.
Well, we've got to follow the rest of the...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of you.
I like your enthusiasm though, Mel.
I was just asking him the question. Yes, he answered it, okay. Way ahead of the client here, sorry.
Well, I like your enthusiasm. It's good. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
I do have some brochure to finish. If you guys would like to have one.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Maybe after the hearing.
We really offered a lot.
Because otherwise, it's Mel's record.
At this project, if anybody want one.
Great. Well, drop one off to staff, then we can see where that goes. Anybody here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to Mel's proposal.
And the only reason I was ahead of myself is since I asked him if he's comfortable with the staff recommendations, which he is, then I would move staff recommendations for approval of this special permit.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hands, say aye. Motion carries five to nothing. You're in business. Get those signs up. We'll check them out.
And Bill will check it out in more detail.
Yeah, there we go. That works out a lot better. Item eleven is a special permit and variance at six hundred East Fifth Street.
Mr. Chair members of the board, this item is very similar to the previous item. This item is the Prime Nursing and Rehabilitation Center, just up the hill on the corner of East Fifth, Fort Des Moines Street. They are requesting a special permit for a special event signage, and they are also asking for a variance of the limitation that limits the special permit to two thirty-day periods within any year. These appeals would allow for display of a sixteen-foot by twenty-five-foot banner sign at the top story on the west facade of the building. And here's a diagram of what the sign looks like, twenty-five feet tall by sixteen feet wide. And then, the sign actually went up a couple of days ago, so we do have a photo of...
Oh, it's not CGI.
What it looks like.
Yeah.
This was taken from the armory building, and then these were the site photos I took last week. So, this is, to give you some perspective from Second Avenue, you can see where the sign is, so I think the purpose of putting it there is to make it visible from Second Avenue, and also, this was from the freeway here, so he'll also be able to have some visibility along the freeway. We did not get any comment cards back, so. Similar to the last item, staff recommends they've demonstrated the criteria necessary for having a special permit for up to sixty days. We don't feel that it's in the city's best interest to have it there more than sixty days. This plastic banner material, over time, becomes tattered and worn and can become an eyesore, so we've recommended approval, subject to the same three conditions as the last one. One, any sign shall be displayed no longer than sixty days. Two, any sign shall be securely fastened to a wall. And three, any sign shall be in accordance with the sign permit issued to a sign contractor. Any questions?
Has there been a sign permit pulled for what's there right now? Has there been a sign permit pulled for what's there right now?
It didn't look...
Does that mean that even if we approve this, they go get their sign permit?
Right.
Okay, all right.
I imagine they would've been able to issue a sign permit since the board hasn't approved it.
To your knowledge, is the bottom of the sign somehow fixed, or do you just think the weight of the sign makes it hang?
One of them was fixed.
Okay.
The other one was probably fixed at one point.
All right. Okay. Because even there, I can't quite read the phone number. It's furled and can't quite get it all. Bill, are you gonna write that down?
Yep.
Okay. Not gonna tease ya.
Got the brochure, too. Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Bert. Applicant or representative of the applicant?
Good afternoon. I'm Chris Barrientos. I'm representing Prime Nursing and Rehab. It's at 600 East Fifth. And that's a nice picture, but I have a little bit better one. I took one just a little bit before I headed over here, and I'll show you that. But the first thing I want to tell you is we are under new management as of last summer. And I'd like to tell you this because I want to let you know that we have some extenuating circumstances that I hope you'll understand so that we can have it a little bit longer. We took over from a previous company that didn't do a real good job, so the census is very low. And we spent most of the last nine months rehabbing and getting things up to quality so that the residents can be served well. And now, we've got enough apartments remodeled that we'd like to start marketing. But we don't have a lot of funds left over because we rehab so much. So this is our sole marketing effort at this point. And we chose this not because I think it's the best, but with my 20 years of advertising experience, there's lots of other things to do, and I always did other things. But given our lack of funds that could do radio and internet and TV and newspaper, the outdoor signage seems to be the best because of the location and the fact that we want to interest other people that are living downtown right now. So having that out there so that people know that it's even an apartment building, you know? Let me show you. We knew that we would want to have it up as long as possible, and so we made it out of this heavyweight 12-ounce banner material. The way it's positioned, there is a anchor at the bottom, and it's anchored securely from the roof at the top. And it goes directly between the concrete walls, I guess, so that there's very little air that can go underneath and make it, you know, fluctuate and flap in the wind. And we did that because we don't want it to rip, because we don't have to want to go through another expense of buying another one. But, you know, our census is very low, like I said, and we would like to be able to market and bring in as many people as possible. This is our current apartment. Can you see that?
Might have to turn that 90 degrees.
Lockwise.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have 98 total apartments, but we only have 20 currently occupied.
Okay.
And then, the rest is on the back here. So we are at a dire need. And to keep this facility viable, we need to bring in as many people as we can now that we've remodeled and we have a good position. So with that, you know, we ask for that variance to be more than the 60 days that the staff is recommending. You know, we talked about other possibilities for materials, but given the fact that it's 11 stories up and that there is a... This is the dining room. And the position to get a cherry picker or a boom truck up, it's very difficult to get it close enough to the building to get it all the way up 150-plus feet to get a heavyweight sign, you know, plywood or metal or something like that. You'd have to install it from the roof down. And I just, we just felt like we don't have any choice of installation, you know, to get that up there without spending maybe thousands of dollars, probably. So here is our current occupant list. I'm gonna leave that fairly short because I, you know, it's kind of confidential, sort of. But that is the 20 apartments that are currently rented. It's dated in October, and we haven't had any turnover since then or any additions. The other part of the facility is Prime Nursing and Rehab. So attached to it is a facility that's a nursing home or for anybody that's had injuries that they need to have care for for 24 hours. And so we find that the addition of our adult independent living apartments, combined with the skilled nursing, can be a great combination for people out there, but they just need to know. And we have this as a marketing piece.
Yeah.
But again, it's only useful if it gets in someone's hands if they come visit. So these are the apartments that I'm currently marketing. So I have roughly 10 right now available, and we think that six months, we'd like to get all of those and then another 20 if we can have those remodeled. But we can remodel more when we get current ones rented as the money comes in. And so I think it's feasible to see that six months might be the length of time that we would need. But we did ask for a year because you just don't know if things are gonna go fast or slow, so...
You did say it's up already.
It is up. It got up Monday. And we do have a permit that was submitted.
You get a 10-day permit.
Yep, 10-day permit.
Right, without having to come to us. Right, okay.
I worked with, I can't remember, there's two different guys, DeBost and somebody else, that helped me do those.
Okay.
So...
So what you're asking, you're asking for a year, maybe six months?
Yeah. A year is what we asked for in the variance, but, yeah, I think we would be very happy with six months. We really didn't know. This is our first time coming to the board and asking, and I asked his advice, and he said, well, we'll put it down for a year, so... Yeah.
Questions for the applicant? Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? And any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board decision.
I would only support staff recommendations. I understand that they'd like to have it for longer, but, I mean, that's the gateway to our city. I mean, you look out there and have that huge sign that's so visible. I just, I can't support it. I can't, I just can't support it for more than 60 days. If they want to put the sign down on the ground and when people are driving by, then that's a different thing, but not up there. I mean, I bet we could look out the window and see it.
The only thing I say, she's got a good point, you know? You have to get a cherry picker, get that thing up there. They incur a lot of cost to get that up and down.
Right.
It's cost to do them business.
Yeah. Well...
Six months doesn't shake me out. I'm comfortable with it. A year, I think it might be kinda...
What's always perplexed me about this place, it's got one of the best views of all of downtown. I think it'd be neat to live on the 10th floor there, but I work about five blocks from there, and I've been confused over the last few years as who lives there, what's going on, what's the marketing plan? I think it's a great-looking property in a great location. I'd like to see it get filled. Conversely, there's not a lot of, quote, "drive-by" traffic there. You know, the streets, the pattern around there doesn't really take you anywhere. The Botanical Center cuts you off, and so to actually be able, for people to get a little more exposure to see it's available, it is a large property. And as you referenced, they did, you know, it takes a lot of effort to put that sign up. I see where Linda's at. It's a little much, but if I go to Kansas City and I look at some of the high-rises down there, they say lofts available, and I'm hoping those are only temporary signs as well. But in some of the larger cities, you do see some of this. If it's somewhat of a temporary nature, I'd be okay with it. I'd probably say no more than the six months. By that time, I would hope, like that marketing piece she had, I learned more from that just in the 30 seconds I was there. I'm like, hey, sounds like a neat place. But, you know, if they could get to the point where they can do more of that, I think that ultimately would probably be more successful for them. But I'm not opposed to the six months as long as they keep that sign secured and fastened appropriately or something. Because if we got any problems with it, then I think they'd have to take it down.
And hopefully, it takes off and then, in, let's say, three months, full, don't need it anymore, take it down.
Right, oh, that'd be great, yeah. Yeah. Or maybe after six months, they fill some. There's a different way to get that out there, you know, do a mic pace thing or something. I don't know.
Six months will put us, what, around September timeframe? You're gonna get the summer traffic then. You're either gonna make your biggest hit then...
Or you're not. Yeah, if you haven't moved by fall, then you might not. But I do understand what Linda's getting at, but even if it was a 60-day period, the way the city has it, it'd be two separate 30-day periods. So I think it'd have to, it'd be up and then it'd have to come down and then go up again, and I, that's gonna be kind of a tough one. Oh, they actually can? Okay, okay. So why not just say, oh, it's two 30-day periods within one year, which, or 60 in aggregate together?
Yeah, it's set up to allow you to break it.
Break it if you want, okay. So spring sale, fall sale, that kind of stuff, okay.
180 days, that seems... I think they're gonna be in a position that it'll come down sooner than that.
Okay.
That's my thought, anyway. And like I say, that was a distressed area there for quite a while. The previous owners ran that right into the ground, so...
Right. And with East Village taken off, you're just two blocks up the hill from there. If, you know, if somebody enjoyed that area, and with the changes at the Botanical Center coming, I mean, this could be the place to be, so... So, well, if I put a motion to recommend approval of the special permit, subject to the following conditions. Condition number one would be any sign shall be displayed no longer than 180 days, so that'd be a minor amendment to the staff recommendation. And then, staff recommendations two and three.
I'll second that. I think that that sounds fair. And, you know, we do want that to take off. I mean, we want bodies down there.
Right. And just for clarification, I don't know if Bert or Eric could answer this, but it says the sign shall be in accordance with the sign permit. She said it's like a 12-ounce vinyl. Do you think that that would meet what the permit department would want? Because if they don't, then they'll have to meet that, because we can't change that.
I would think that'd be okay. If they issued a permit for the 10-day temporary, that sign there for a 10-day temporary...
With the way it was, that'd probably be sturdy enough for the period we're talking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries four to one.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all right. Good points, then. And last but not least, item 12 is a variance at 5901 East Highview Drive, also known as 5707 Southeast 45th.
This is in the, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board. This property is in the annexed area that came into the city in 2009. This area is known as Avon, when it was previously in the unincorporated areas of Polk County. You can see the bypass here, and you might remember a little rodeo.
Oh, yeah.
So just to give you a sense of where we're at, the desire is to divide this off as the homestead away from the remaining agricultural cultivated land. The long-range plan for the city still calls for this area to be agricultural. Right now, the utility systems are not in place to be able to allow it for development at any densities. And for that reason, in looking at this, by dividing this off, staff would not want to see another homestead established on the remainder parcel, even though it would have enough land area to meet the requirement to allow one. I think we're sort of, it's almost like we're saying, let's divide off the piece of land that's large enough that we would allow a house in favor of a smaller one, and we're sort of getting to switch the, and leave the house on the smaller parcel as it exists. I think this accomplishes the intent. My understanding is the owner of the property still intends to live within the homestead and maintain that as a residence for a period of time, and also allows the ability then to gain the income. And so if we required each piece to have at least 10 acre, the house with, the piece with the house to have 10 acres, the return on selling the land for agricultural purposes or future development purposes is drastically reduced, and that probably would not permit a reasonable return on it, because you'd have even less of a developable piece to be able to work with if the utilities and so forth come into the area so that it can be developed. So we would just want the restriction, we believe that they meet the test for variance, and we do want the restriction of not allowing another property to be developed on the remainder parcel, and that that should be indicated on the plat that would be recorded. And in all likelihood, this can be done as an administrative-level plat, which we call a plat of survey, which is not to be confused with the state of Iowa's plat of survey in the code of Iowa.
Help me just understand. So they want to, and I know the applicant will talk, but they want to just take off their piece so they can have their, like, an acreage-type home?
Right.
And then, would that, would their zoning change to like, what is it, RR or...
Well, their zoning wouldn't change. It would still be A1 with this relief.
Even their house?
Yeah.
Even though they don't do agriculture anymore?
Right. And that's why they need this relief, because normally, under agricultural zone, a single-family dwelling has to have at least 10 acres. And so this, by dividing this to only have approximately two-acre piece, then you don't meet that intent of having...
Right.
And the reason we have the 10-acre provision is to keep the agricultural land from being divided into large estates without sewers and what we kind of call as rural sprawl. So that was the intent of not having... In this case, the home's already there. They want to maximize the return on the remainder piece to lease it or to sell it for agricultural use until at some time when all the things necessary are in place, they could develop it. And at that time, that would have to be rezoned to allow any, you know, number of dwellings or commercial use or whatever, so... By putting this restriction on it, what it does prevent is another person from placing their homestead with a septic system or whatever. So we're not, we're not really gaining any development. We're not, we're trying to work away from by granting it this way.
No. And Eric, even before this was annexed into the city limits, didn't Polk County zoning that would have applied have kind of some similar restrictions that they just didn't want, you know, the half-half?
No, I don't recall if this was... Polk County did have some zoning that allowed one acres, one acreages. I don't know if this was in that or not.
Okay. As I have the suburban estate, estate district, all that, but it was kind of a tiered approach that the nearer it was to an urban area, the smaller the lot could be.
Yeah, and also, they allowed for some clustering provisions.
Okay.
I couldn't really speak to without having that as a reference.
Sure, okay. All right.
It's possible, yeah.
What is this little neighborhood called? Is this like West Avon, or what did they really...
I think they just refer to it as Avon.
Okay, all right. So this is Avon itself, okay.
And some of the commercial area to the south is Avon Dale.
So where Avon Lake is... So where Avon Lake is by the...
Over across the...
That's called Avon Lake, this is just called Avon?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Some trivia there, yeah.
I know it well, Mel.
Yep.
Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Eric. Last guy in the barrel, so you must be the applicant.
Dave Johnson, I'm here on behalf of Mike Whaley, and we're just trying to complete a transaction, do a plat of survey, so he can transfer title to the land that he's selling. Don't really have any disagreements with what they said, in agreement with that. The only, one of the notations here that I saw, and you kind of clarified, plat of survey comment, was a comment in here that said a subdivision plat. So my question with that would be, are you asking for TOPOs? Are you just asking for a survey to delineate the property?
I was reserving the right for us to make that judgment administratively, based on the, you know, without having a full body of people that enter into that decision.
Okay.
Right.
Well, nothing's going to change. The guy that's buying it's going to farm it and no intention of dividing it up at this stage.
Okay.
So, one, all it does is add cost to do a TOPO and all of that, it adds cost to the process, so we would like to just do a plat of survey, simple survey and transfer title that way.
Great. Questions for the applicant?
Just brief one, there's, Mr. Johnson, there's no proposals for any rodeos or anything on the divided off larger parts.
I heard that was a pretty fun deal. Actually, I didn't hear anything.
You'd have to come see us ahead of time. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Since there's nobody else here, there's nobody else in support, nobody else in opposition, so any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board decision.
Well, I'd say if you're going to carve it off, it's on the right corner of the parcel down there with the other houses and doesn't look out of the ordinary to me.
Mm-hmm.
And we still keep our ag character on the rest, so...
So, motion to accept staff recommendation?
Sure, as the ward four rep, I'd make a motion to recommend approval of the requested variances, subject to staff recommendation items one and two.
Any second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Motion carries five to nothing. You know, this is probably one of the best, I mean, normally, I'd be here till five, so you got the express route today.
Yeah, even for the last guy, only two hours.
Well, I see everybody stayed with the aisle in the last one.
Well, you picked the proper meeting to be last, though.
That's right. Take a motion to accept, and by the way, I forgot about that, but this is a good thing to get the minutes electronically, because that just, got to save a ton of paper for you guys, so...
Yep.
I'll take, accept a motion to accept minutes from the last meeting?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to nothing. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.
Okay, Bert, I have to ask a question.